Good evening, everyone. I would like to call to order this meeting of the West Palm Beach City Commission. Today is Monday, August 21st, 2023, and the time is 5:00 P.M. We will start this meeting off, as we do all of our meetings, with a moment of silence. Keep in mind the victims of the wildfire in Hawaii and the storm over in California, and their families, friends. Madam President, can you lead us in the Fledge of Allegiance?
Suicide of the United States of America. Thank you to the Republic, for which it stands. One nation, from your God, and the difficult, with the difficulty and threat of the law.
Just want to remind everyone of the rules of civility in the quorum which govern this meeting. Officials shall be recognized by the Chair and shall not interrupt a speaker. Public comment shall be addressed to the City Commission as a whole and not to any individual in the dais and the audience. Displays of anger, rudeness, ridicule, impatience, lack of respect, and personal attacks are strictly prohibited. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping, effete, whistles, yells, and similar demonstrations should not be permitted. Please govern yourselves accordingly, as offenders may be removed from the meeting. In addition, any person desiring to address the Commission shall file a written request with the City clerk prior to the consideration of the matter. The person shall complete a comment card, which will include their address, their full name, and the number of agenda item. And if that is not done, then the comment card will not be accepted. Thank you very much for your attention. Madam City Administrator, are there any additions, deletions, reorganization of the agenda?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Very good, thank you. We do have a proclamation, which I am happy to deliver. In honor of National Black Business Month, National Black Business Month was founded in 2004 to recognize the vital contributions of black-owned businesses throughout our country and to encourage their continued development. Black-owned businesses and business owners play a vital role in our community by providing goods and services that are necessary for our community to thrive while overcoming numerous personal and professional challenges. The Black Chamber of Commerce of Palm Beach County advocates, educates, and represents the interests of the thousands of black-owned businesses in our area, and promoting and supporting black-owned businesses is a critical step in addressing the racial wealth gap that persists in our community and our country. The City of West Palm Beach implemented a remedial minority women's business enterprise program in April 2019 to counteract the disadvantages faced by minority and women-owned businesses. The City of West Palm Beach developed the First Steps Grant Program to assist smaller minority and women-owned businesses in obtaining funding to support their growth, and will host STEM in the City Forum in observance of Black Business Month on August 23rd, 2023. This month and year round, the City of West Palm Beach encourages our residents and visitors to support black-owned businesses and aligns all our vendors and businesses within our community of their responsibility to work towards the inclusion and empowerment of black-owned enterprises. I, Keith A. James, Mayor of the City of West Palm Beach, hereby proclaim August 2023 as Black Business Month. And here to accept the proclamation are Joseph Sanchez, President of the Black Chamber of Commerce, and Frank Hayden, who is the Director of the Office of Small and Minority Business Program.
It's my pleasure, again, of Joseph Sanchez, President of the Black Chamber of Commerce, is my honor to accept the proclamation on behalf of the Black Chamber. Next year, we'll be celebrating 20 years as a chamber here in Palm Beach County. I'll seat right here in the City of West Palm Beach. Just invite everyone to come out and participate in our various activities, to network and get to know our members, and become a member as well. I just wanted to thank Fay Johnson for agreeing to come to one of our breakfasts. She's going to help entertain and also inform our members on how to do business with the City of West Palm Beach so we can continue to grow our businesses. So just thank you very much, and hope you guys enjoy the rest of the evening. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hayden, you want to say anything?
Mr. Mayor, Madam President, Commissioners, I want to thank you all for this proclamation. Last year, you might remember, we had this as well. And we'll be having a function tomorrow, which has been mentioned, I'm sorry, Wednesday, at the Pavilion at 5:30. We have some outstanding people who are going to be a part of a panel dealing with technology, engineering, science, and medical. So it'll be a good opportunity to come out and learn and hear about this. We're inviting students out. We're also going to have some college students there as well. This is an opportunity for minorities who don't do or not fully represented in those fields to come out and learn about them and to get that knowledge and education they need. So, thank you all again for the proclamation, and hopefully we'll see you all on Wednesday, 5:30. Have a good one. Thank you.
Thanks, and again, congratulations to the Black Chamber for all that they're doing, and Mr. Hayden for all that you do. We have a couple of appointments. Item 7.1, Commissioners, I am asking for your approval of the reappointment of Polidair to the Sustainability Advisory Committee for a term of two years to expire on August 25th, 2025. Your approval was required because she has served over the maximum allowed number of terms, which is three. I will entertain a motion.
So moved. I recommend that we approve Ms. Doherty's reappointment because it is supported due to her passion for the issues and commitment to the community.
Thank you. It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved as second at discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. I also would request your approval, Commissioners, for the reappointment of Miles Shaq to the Water Advisory Board for a term of two years to expire on August 7th, 2025. Mr. Shaq has served over the maximum allowed number of terms, which is three, and is required that the City Commission therefore confirm his reappointment. I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move Mr. Shaq's reappointment. It's supported due to his professional background and institutional knowledge.
Thank you. It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved as second at discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Commissioners. We'll now turn to the consent agenda, items 8.1 through 8.11. Do we have any cards on the consent? Commissioners, do we have any questions, comments on consent? No cards? Okay. I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move we accept the consent calendar.
Thank you. It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved as second at discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 9.1, Resolution Number 190-23 relating to the ratification of a successor collective bargaining agreement between the City of West Palm Beach and the Service Employees International Union, S.E.I.U., Florida Public Services Union, F.P.S.U., C.T.W., C.L.C., Certified Unit Number 401, for the period of October 1st, 2023 through September 30th, 2026.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. Jose Luis Rodriguez, Assistant City Administrator. In conjunction with item 9.1, this presentation will also cover item 9.2, which is Resolution 191.23 related to the PMSA collective bargaining agreement, which is also a three-year agreement up for your consideration. So by way of background, we began negotiations with S.E.I.U. and PMSA on February 17th of this year. The city's negotiation team consisted of our city administrator, myself, the city attorney, Ms. Rothenberg, and Assistant Chief Human Resources Officer Sylvia Gregory. And this negotiating team will also include our new Chief Human Resources Officer Renee Goveg next year, and she will be leading those negotiations for the two contracts that will be up for negotiation in the 2024 calendar year. So our tentative agreement with S.E.I.U. was reached on July 18th, and a tentative agreement with PMSA was reached on July 20th. These two resolutions before you will ratify each of those agreements. Those agreements were ratified by the respective unions overwhelmingly. S.E.I.U. ratified the agreement by a margin of 98% in favor to two opposed of those members that voted. PMSA also overwhelmingly ratified the agreement, 97% of their employees in favor, 3% opposed. And both agreements, if ratified by the Commission, would take effect on October 1st of this year and will run for three years through the end of September 30th of 2026. Some of the representative positions, this is not an all-inclusive list, of S.E.I.U. classifications that are impacted and governed by these agreements, you can see some examples there. HVAC mechanics, lab technicians, fleet service techs, utilities, electricians, sanitation, all fall under S.E.I.U. PMSA job classifications covered by the agreement, there's a representative sample there of the most common positions such as accountants, librarians, recreation managers, utilities, sanitation, and ECR superintendents. In terms of the main provisions of the agreement, most of the substantive changes apply to the compensation article of each agreement, and both agreements contain the same provisions. A 5% COLA will be provided on October 1st, 2023, for fiscal year 24, for members represented by each union. And in addition to the 5% COLA, a 15% market adjustment, up to a 15% market adjustment, would also be applicable to those union-represented employees, also effective October 1st, 2023. As mentioned previously at our workshop a couple of weeks ago, the combined COLA and market adjustment salary increases will bring the average S.E.I.U. and PMSA pay from about 8.18% below the market to 7.9% above market, and we are very optimistic that this will not only improve recruitment but also retention of our talented workforce. And it's important to note that the market adjustment is a truly historic achievement that the city has been able to provide to these employees. There has not been a market adjustment provided to these employees in the past besides just their COLAs and on years where there were merit increases before the economic downturn, those increases. And in addition to providing the market adjustment, a market adjustment of up to 15% is also unheard of in terms of our past practice. So the combined cost of both collective bargaining agreements for FY '24 is about 5.9 million. The cost of implementing both of the agreements of the 5.9 million have been built into the proposed fiscal year '24 balanced budget that has been presented to the Commission, so all of that cost is accounted for. And there's a brief breakdown on this slide of how those costs break down. In the case of S.E.I.U., about $900,000 is the cost of the COLA, about $2.9 million is the cost of the market adjustment, and about $60,000 is the cost of raising the tool allowance that positions such as mechanics get on an annual basis. We doubled it from 300 to 600. That tool allowance had not been updated in the past decade. So we are now caught up with what that tool allowance should be compared to what you would see in other similar employers. So that is another good point that we were able to provide to our employees, benefit that we were able to provide to our employees this year. For PMSA, they only have two main components consisting of compensation-related items. That is the COLA, which is going to cost about $622,000, and their market adjustment, which will cost about 1.3 million. So that concludes my presentation, and we respectfully request your approval of Resolution 190-23, which will ratify the collective bargaining agreements for 2023 through 2026 with S.E.I.U., and Resolution 191-23, which is item 9.2 on the agenda, which will ratify the PMSA collective bargaining agreement that will be in effect from 2023 to 2026.
Thank you for that presentation, and Commissioners, as you heard, this will certainly enable the city to take its, what I think it's rightly placed, as the leading city in this market for compensating their employees. It will help us with our retention of able employees and also with the recruiting. So this is a well-deserved action, and I'm pleased to see that the unions have responded accordingly. Any questions, comments? Commissioner Fox and President Warren. Commissioner Lambert, okay.
Thank you so much. I am also very happy to see this come forward, and our employees are our greatest asset, and this is well-deserved. My question was, I think during the workshop, we also discussed the non-union employees, that sometimes we have employees that are sitting next to each other with the same job, but one might be in a union and one might not. So I think, I believe we don't have to vote on the non-union employees, but I just wanted to confirm for the record that the non-union employees are also going to receive this benefit.
Correct, Commissioner. The non-union employees, their terms and conditions in terms of COLAs and salary ranges, salary increases, market adjustments, are governed by the budget, and those increases will be in the FY '24 budget that you will consider. And then the further discussion that we had on adjusting the pay ranges, all that takes place as part of the annual compensation plan that will also come before you, and that item is on consent in the September agenda at the same time you consider the final budget.
Okay, great, thank you.
President Warren.
I'd just like to commend everyone for the outstanding effort that has gone into writing this ship and getting the salaries and the position that they should be in. I think it was an amazing collaborative effort of all of the department heads and matter administrator, as well as you, Mr. Rodriguez, and Mr. Front, in order to be able to identify how we would be able to make this work and how it would be sustainable and make sense. And I just want to say that I know that it was no easy task, so thank you very much for bringing this forward.
Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you. I also had comments of appreciation, just that I'm pleased to see this move forward with such support, not only from the unions but from this dais as well. I see this as a win-win for our community, not only a much-needed and well-deserved increase for our hard-working employees, but also for our residents and stakeholders who suffer when we struggle with retention and recruitment. So this is an excellent tool in our toolbox now and happy to support it. Thank you.
Any other comments? Do we have any cards? Okay, so while we heard the presentation on both of the resolutions, we'll need to take them one at a time, so I will entertain a motion on item 9.1.
Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution Number 190-23.
Second.
It's been moved as second at discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. All right, let me read into the record item 9.2. Resolution Number 191-23 relating to the ratification of a successor collective bargaining agreement between the City of West Palm Beach and the Professional Managers and Supervisors Association, Certified Unit Number 1073, PMSA, for the period of October 1st, 2023 through September 30th, 2026. And we have heard the presentation, so I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution Number 191-23.
Second.
It's been moved as second at discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Item 9.3, Resolution Number 53-23 approves of proposed art concepts for Icon Marina Village by the Related Group at 4444 North Flagler Drive to satisfy the public art requirement. 1% of the total construction cost escrowed is $1,74,437. Ms. Welter.
Good evening, Mayor. Commissioner Seville Welter, Director of Arts, Culture, and Community Building. I'm here on behalf of the Art Life Committee to present the two artworks for Icon Marina Village so that they can meet their public art requirement. Just setting the scenery here, so these are the two buildings that look out to the waterway, and one of the public artworks will be placed on the backside, and this is the front view from North Flagler. So on the site plan, the two works that were commissioned were very specific. What the developer wanted was the land-meets-water situation, where one piece would be on North Flagler, the land side, and the other piece would be on the backside of the property located on Lake Worth Lagoon. As you can see on the site plan, I indicated the sidewalk to the north side of the property, and that sidewalk is accessible publicly to the backside where the promenade is. And $980,000 was the total that they spent on the artwork, and so the balance that they escrowed will be deposited into the public art account. The first artist they commissioned was Cuban artist Glenda Leon, and she is based out of Madrid, and she is a multimedia artist. And she created symbiosis, which is a term used to describe the relationship between two elements, two organisms. For this one, she wanted to create a large-scale, 18-by-18-foot diameter, excuse me, made out of aluminum, a structure that she says is an environmental statement. In other words, she wants to bring awareness to the interconnectivity that exists. So in this piece, it's the river becomes the tree, the tree becomes the river. What affects the river affects the tree, what affects the tree affects the river. The second artist is Miami-based artist Emmett Moore, who is also an artist and does a lot of design-based work. And this one, he created a lighthouse. This obviously sits on the backside of where the water is. So this is his modern interpretation of a lighthouse. We all know historic lighthouses as a beacon of light, and that light does work, by the way, to have safe passage for those out at sea. This is a 20 by 50, so it is a very prominent-sized artwork, and it will be lit at night, and that prominence that you see right there is accessible to the public. So, on behalf of the Art Life Committee, these two public artworks met the criteria in Section 78-125 of the City Code, and they recommend unanimously symbiosis by Glenda Leon, lighthouse by Emmett Moore, on two conditions, that that balance of the 1% be deposited into the public art account, and the other one being that the pedestrian passageway on the north side, which I identified for you, remain publicly accessible, no gates, no fences. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. Is the condition that the committee imposed, that's not part of the resolution, do we need to add that to the motion? Madam City Attorney, about the deposit or the excess?
Is the deposit part of your resolution?
Well, that's the question I'm asking. It doesn't look like it in the right terms, but...
Then if a deposit is required, and it's not part of the resolution, I would include it in your motion there.
All right. Ms. Welter, what is the amount, the actual dollar amount, so whoever makes the motion can make sure that's included?
Give me one second. Oh, give me one second. I don't have the exact amount with me. I can do the math really quick.
Well, maybe we could say something to the effect that any difference between $1,74,437 and the actual amount of the art will be deposited...
Which is $980,000. It was $0,000, was the actual amount of the artwork.
Give me that again?
$980,000.
Okay. It's going to be about $94,000 then, right? $94,437 will be deposited. Okay. Any cards on this item?
No.
Hearing none, I will entertain, any comments, questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you. I know that in the beginning, you went over the placement of the art that would be in the back. I just, and you've mentioned that it's accessible to the public. I'm just wondering if you could go into that in just a little bit more detail. I just want to know how the public gets back there, and...
Sure, I'll show you on the side.
I know that in the past, there has been some conversation about art and our public art and ensuring that everybody has access to it.
Absolutely. So you see the sidewalk on the north side. If you follow that line straight back to the water...
Can I use the mouse on that?
Yeah. Here's the sidewalk, right here. This is all, right here is the pedestrian pathway that leads, no gates right now, to the promenade. And all this is publicly accessible. And the reason we determined the north side is that is what was mentioned twice to the Art Life Committee. So they might put something here but not on the north side.
Follow-up, Mayor?
Yes.
Is the beach also open?
Well, I don't know.
Does that walkway there?
You know, this wasn't part of the public art requirement to be publicly accessible, so I'm not really sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Ward.
I just was responding, I've walked it myself, and so it is open. You can go all the way around the building and walk through, and nothing. It's really nice.
Any other questions or comments? There are no cards, so I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 53-23 with specific approval that $94,000 be deposited back, is that the wrong number? $94,000 be deposited back into the art life.
And we need that second paragraph also read.
The proposed public art concepts are for Icon Marina Village. This motion is based on the findings that the proposed artwork meets the criteria set forth in Section 78-125 of the City Code as reviewed by the Art Life W.P.B. Committee.
Thank you. It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved as second at discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 10.1, public hearing and second reading of ordinance number 5053-23, amending Chapter 94, Article 15, Parking Regulations, Section 94... section ninety-four dash forty-six, table fifteen dash six, citywide parking requirements, to amend the minimum parking requirements for the warehousing facilities for families and small businesses use category.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. For the record, Kevie DeFranks, Senior Planner with the Development Services Department. And as stated, this is the second reading of ordinance number five zero five three dash twenty-three, and no changes have been made since the first reading.
Very good, thank you. Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. I just had a question more about the philosophical thought behind parking minimums. And I know that in some areas, we set maximums, and in other areas, we set minimums. Can you just speak to that on, you know, the philosophy behind what we're doing here?
So... On...
Angela Van Penning is on administrative. Currently, Commissioner, our parking regulations are quite old. We haven't basically updated them in a while. So as you can see, downtown deals with minimum-maximums. Some of the newer sections of the code where we've updated them, we go to minimum-maximum. We'll look at, at some point, the update our zoning code, and we will possibly go minimum-maximum and do a better job of providing uses like for, again, for storage facilities. Our code basically requires a lot of parking that basically is not used. So hopefully, at some point in the future, we can go and update the zoning code, parking regulations for the zoning code for the entire city outside of downtown, and may use minimum-maximum and stuff like that.
And, follow-up, Mayor?
Yes.
And then in the meantime, if someone's building something and they realize that this is going to produce a large amount of excess parking, they could come and ask for a variance on that as the code reads now?
If you are east of ninety-five or Skray, or Skrayan Avenue, and you're in a planned development, yes, you can reduce thirty percent of your parking requirements.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions on this item? Hearing none, any cards? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number five zero five three dash two three, amending the city's zoning and land development regulations at article fifteen, parking regulations, section ninety-four dash four eighty-six, table fifteen dash six, citywide parking requirements. This motion is based upon the factual testimony presented, the staff report, the recommendation of the planning board, and the findings that the proposed amendment complies with all the amendment standards found in section ninety-four dash thirty-two of the city's zoning and land development regulations.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second at discussion. You have Commissioner Lambert?
Just that I would be in favor of that citywide review that staff mentioned. Thank you.
Any other comments on the motion? Hearing none, Madam Court, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number five zero five three dash two three, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, amending chapter ninety-four, article fifteen, parking, section nine four dash four eight six, table fifteen dash six, to amend minimum parking requirements for warehousing facilities for families and small businesses use category, declaring this proposed zoning tax amendment to be consistent with the comprehensive plan, providing a conflict clause and a severability clause, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. And Madam City Administrator, can you make note of Commissioner Lambert's desire to follow-up on the offer of staff to do the citywide?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Item ten point two, public hearing and second reading of ordinance number five zero five six dash twenty-three, a city-initiated request amending chapter ninety-four, section ninety-four dash three oh two, fences, hedges, and walls, to prohibit fences, hedges, and walls on the east side of Flagler Drive for non-contiguous residential property east of Flagler Drive, where the primary residence is west of Flagler Drive.
And Mayor Angela Van Penning is on administrative. This is second reading, there have been no changes since first reading.
Very good. Any questions, comments, Commissioners? Any cards? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
May I recommend approval of ordinance number five zero five six dash two three, amending chapter ninety-four, section ninety-four dash three zero two, fences, hedges, and walls, to prohibit, to prohibit fences, hedges, and walls on the east side of Flagler Drive for non-continuous residential property east of Flagler Drive, where the primary residence is west of Flagler Drive. This motion is based upon the factual testimony presented, the staff report, the recommendation of the planning board, and the findings that the proposed amendment complies with all the amendment standards found in section ninety-four dash thirty-two of the city's zoning and land development regulations.
Thank you very much. It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second at discussion. Hearing none, Madam Court, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number five zero five six dash two three, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, at chapter ninety-four, zoning and land development regulations, article ten, supplemental district regulations, section nine four dash three zero two, fences, hedges, and walls, to prohibit fences, hedges, and walls on the east side of Flagler Drive for non-contiguous residential property east of Flagler Drive, where the primary residence is west of Flagler Drive, declaring this amendment to be consistent with the comprehensive plan of the city, providing a conflict clause, a codification clause, and a severability clause, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item ten point three, public hearing and first reading of ordinance number five zero six two dash twenty-three, amending boards, committees, and commissions to remove provisions allowing advisory board members to hold meetings remotely through communication media technology. Ms. Rothenberg?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Kimberly Rothenberg, City Attorney. I am here to present ordinance number fifty-six-two twenty-three. And if you will remember back in two thousand and twenty, the issue that prompted us to consider having remote meetings came about as a result of COVID-nineteen. At that time, the governor had sent the Attorney General a letter requesting what could we do in order to help local government continue to operate during the pandemic? And the question that was asked was whether or not local governing bodies could use teleconferencing or other technological means to convene their meetings without meeting in public and having the public submitted and subjected to becoming infected with COVID-nineteen. So the response was that the only time that local governments could do public meetings in order to meet their quorum requirements was if there was a statutory authority for that and/or if there was an emergency that was declared. And what the governor did was then declare an emergency, the president declared an emergency, and we conducted our business, and some of our advisory boards conducted business through this electronic means. The federal government ceased their public health emergency on May eleventh of two thousand and twenty-three, and we need to then revoke our code provisions that allow for advisory board members to meet electronically also. And that's really because there was another prior opinion of the AG and several that preceded that that really says that local governments under chapter one sixty-six, zero four one, conduct their boards and create quorums, that an affirmative vote of the majority of those present is necessary to enact an ordinance or adopt a resolution. Present in the eye of the AG is in person?
Ms. Rothenberg, let me interrupt you. We're not getting that slide on our screens in front of us. Whoever is channel eighteen, we see it over there, it was difficult to read from this angle. There we go. Thank you.
So that's in person, present, and the Attorney General also has opined, and those two of the opinions are in front of you, and I put the full text of those opinions so that you had them. But that the same quorum requirements of your governing body is required for the boards that they create to help them in their function and their duties. So I put some snippets here. The City of Coral Gables asked a question whether or not they could create an ordinance to allow their individual bodies, and this instance was a pension board, to meet remotely. And the answer of the Attorney General was, no, they could not alter the quorum requirements to allow them to meet remotely, but they had to be present in person. So with that, based on these opinions, it's my recommendation that you approve ordinance number fifty-six-two twenty-three, removing the ability for those advisory boards to meet remotely.
Very good. Thank you, Madam City Attorney. Any questions, comments? Commissioner Ward? Commissioner Fox?
And this is probably not directed at the attorney, but more to you, Mayor...
Is your mic on?
Sorry. This is probably more directed towards you, Mayor, or the city administration versus Attorney Rothenberg, but are we aware of any movement towards cities trying to ask this at the state level to have this change? I think that this really hurts participation for a lot of people. We've moved into an area where we can now utilize technology for the benefit of everyone, and now we're kind of going back to the old ways, when I think a lot of people realize that they can interact a lot better when they can engage via Zoom or other means. And so I'm curious whether it is something that this administration is going to try to push for, or if there are already efforts to push for that present not being physical presence.
Mayor, I could probably answer at least, the Florida League of Cities generally will create their legislative agendas every year. I haven't seen it on their agenda this year, but I can certainly follow up with them and see if it's something that they're interested in talking about. As a body, they're the ones with the broadest voice for all of the various municipalities across the state of Florida. So if there was a statutory change that they would bring forward on behalf of those municipalities, that would probably be the best group to do that because of their, you know, size of the association.
Commissioner Fox? I'm sorry, did that, did you have any follow-up? Commissioner Fox?
Thank you. I had a similar question that I asked you in agenda review. I guess to the point that is talking about voting on items or passing resolutions, is there an opportunity to, for example, if, if a committee was meeting every month, but maybe they don't need to vote on things every month, they could hold things, have quarterly meetings in person where they voted on the things that they heard maybe the month before? I'm just wondering if there's an opportunity, if votes were not being taken, could these meetings, because I agree that the participation, I think now people have gotten used to being able to be on Zoom, it's very efficient if you have, you know, to go back to work, or if you're retired or anything, you know, just driving down here, it takes time out of your day that you're maybe not able to participate with the other things that you're working on. So I'm just curious if that would be a consideration, if it's just in terms of the voting requirement that they need to be in person, could we look at some adjustments?
I think that that becomes a very disjointed process, and you have a couple of things going on. You have your sunshine requirements, and whether or not your meeting is open to the public to attend, and if you continue to change the forum in which they're attending, I think it becomes difficult. Certainly something we can maybe look at, but I think that if you're looking for a fix legislatively is probably the cleanest way, because we have to comply with not only the quorum requirements, but also your sunshine requirements, and I think it gets dicey.
Commissioner Beduzzi?
I agree with the comments of my colleagues. I certainly think that, you know, utilizing technology is beneficial and certainly would be more convenient for our advisory boards. But I do know that in one of the boards that I serve as the commission liaison and that I served on prior to joining this DAAS, we were having some difficulty with utilizing Zoom and making sure those who were speaking were turning their cameras on. We had some people talking over each other, and without having cameras on, it was just a black screen, sometimes it was difficult for us to recognize who was speaking. So I think that if we do move to some sort of hybrid at some point, where we allow the utilization of remote technology, that we just have some standards in place as to the best way or best practices that we encourage people to fully utilize the technology and have their cameras on and, and to make sure that their voices in there and their video can actually be seen and heard. Thank you.
Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm appreciative of the suggestion that we reach out to the League of Cities. I would encourage President Warren, who's our representative, to help facilitate that conversation, as well as anything that the city staff could do. But I would also make a plea to those in the audience here in the chambers and watching on TV to reach out to your state legislators, because I believe that this is a bigger conversation. Yes, it is more convenient sometimes to be at home and take a Zoom call, or at work and take a Zoom call and contribute, but I think it also affects who can contribute and who can come to meetings, because not everyone can come to a noon meeting or an after-work meeting, and that our city is better when we have more people participating. So while I understand the nature of this ordinance and what we must do today to stay in compliance, I think that we should seriously look to lobbying our state legislators to have some leniency with this. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? We do have a single card, Mr. Cleveland, Michael Cleveland. You want me to just read your statement here, or you want to come articulate it? Yeah, come on, you're modern walking, okay.
Thank you, man. Good evening, Michael Cleveland. You know, some time ago, I think it was like in the seventies, the Japanese said the Americans are lazy. Every day of life, they're proving themselves to be correct. These committees are something that has volunteered, people come in and serve for the city. Certainly, if they're volunteering for it, they have all means of gathering together. Zoom is fine, but it's not good. So I asked some time ago that these meetings be abandoned, and I'm glad it's before you now to do so. Just on Zoom, that happened during the pandemic. Pandemic is over. Did the pandemic cripple the country, that we can no longer go back to what we used to do? Get off your lazy behind and be attentive. I hope you approve it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. No other cards, any other comments? Then I will entertain a motion.
May I recommend approval of ordinance number five zero six two dash two three on first reading and schedule second reading for September fifth, two thousand and twenty-three? Second.
It's been moved in second at discussion. Hearing none, Madam Court, can read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number five zero six two dash two three, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, amending chapter two, administration of the Code of Ordinances, article three, boards, committees, and commissions, division one, generally removing section two dash six five, meetings by electronic means to two dash six eight, providing for codification, providing for severability and conflict, providing for an effective date and for other purposes.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item ten point four, public hearing of resolution number one ninety-nine dash twenty-three, establishing the rates for the fire service assessment fee for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three slash two thousand and twenty-four, and approving the assessment role. Ms. Sefron?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Bridgette Sefron, Chief Financial Officer. On July twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three, we held the preliminary hearing relative to the fire service assessment fee. This fee is remaining the same as it is in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three for our residential dwellings, that's one hundred dollars.
Excuse me, Ms. Sefron, I'm sorry.
Yes.
All right, now we can't see the, the screen that's up there, we're just seeing the computer screen. So we can kind of get this together, I don't know who's back there, but... Okay, thank you. You can continue, please. Thank you.
Our residential fee for proposed for fiscal year twenty-four remains the same as twenty-three at one hundred dollars per residential unit. We also have four different categories for non-residential properties that have a rate per building square foot. Those rates are also remaining the same. the same per square foot as 2023. With that, are there any questions?
Very good. Thank you for that presentation. Just repeat, there are no changes to residential or to commercial?
To the rate per square foot.
The rate per square foot. Right. Okay. So I thought I heard you say. I just wanted to make sure. Okay, Channel 18. I don't need to see the computer. Okay. Any other questions? Comments, Commissioners? Yeah, there we go. All right. If not, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move approval of Resolution Number 199-23 with no increase in the fire service assessment fee.
Very good. Thank you. It's been moved. Is there a second? It's been moved in second discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 10.5, Public Hearing of Resolution Number 200-23, Adopting the Assessment Role for the Chronic Nuisance Assessment for Fiscal Year 2023/2024, Which Includes Properties with Unpaid Charges for the Abatement of Code Violations and Chronic Nuisance. Ms. Front?
Yes, sir. Good evening again, Bridgette Soufrant, Chief Financial Officer. Again, on July 20th, we held our preliminary hearing, asking for myself and my team to prepare the assessment role with the Chronic Nuisance Service Assessments for Fiscal Year 2023/2024. That assessment role is included in your packet. Everyone has been noticed, and we have, I believe, a week, and we submit that to the county to go on to the tax roll.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions, comments, Commissioners? Hearing none. I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move approval of Resolution Number 200-23.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioners, we're moving to our quasi-judicial portion of the meeting. I need you to make your disclosures, please. Looks like Madam President is ready, so we'll start with President Warren.
Mayor, in reference to matters number 11.1 and 11.3, I have had experte communications with the developer. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation, not made a site visit, not received expert opinions. In reference to item number 11.2, I have not had experte communications, not received written communications, not conducted an investigation, not made a site visit, and not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you. Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. As to item 11.1, I have had experte communications with residents and representatives of the proposer. I have received written communications via email. I have not conducted an investigation. I have made a site visit. I have not received expert opinions. As to item 11.2, I have not had experte communications. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit, nor have I received expert opinions. As to item 11.3, I have had experte communications with representatives of the proposer. I have not received written communications. I have not made an investigation. I have made a site visit. I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you. Commissioner Ward?
As to item 11.1, I have had experte communications with representatives of the applicant. I have received written communications in the form of emails. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit. I have not received expert opinions. As to items 11.2 and 11.3, I have not had experte communications. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit. I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you. Commissioner Fox?
As to item 11.1, I have had experte communications with representatives of the applicant. I have received written communications from residents. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit. I have not received expert opinions. As to items 11.2 and 11.3, I have not had experte communications. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit. I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you. Commissioner Baduzi?
Thank you. As to item 11.1, I have had experte communications with a representative of the applicant. I have received written communications from members of the public. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit, nor have I received any expert opinions. As to items 11.2 and 11.3, I have not had experte communications. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit, nor have I received any expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made a part of the record.
Thank you very much. President Warren, thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to amend my disclosure to say that I have received experte, excuse me, I have received written communications from members of the public.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Madam clerk, can you swear in all witnesses for items 11.1 through 11.5, please?
Would everyone wishing to speak on items 11.1 through 11.3, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Item 11.1, Public Hearing and Second Reading of Ordinance Number 5051-23, Regarding a Future Land Use Map Amendment to Change the Future Land Use Designation of Approximately 0.175 Acres Located at 301 Malvern Road for Multifamily to Commercial and Public Hearing and Second Read of Ordinance Number 5052-23, Regarding a Rezoning to Change the Zoning Designation of Approximately 0.175 Acres Located at 301 Malvern Road for Multifamily Medium Density Residential or MF20, the General Commercial.
Hello again, Mayor, Commissioners. For the record, Kevi DeFrank, Senior Planner with the Development Services Department. And as stated, this is the second reading of ordinance numbers 5051-23 and 5052-23, and no changes have been made since the first reading. But for clarification purposes, ordinance number 5051-23 is for an approval to change the future land use designation of the subject property located at 301 Malvern Road from multifamily to commercial. And ordinance number 5052-23 is for an approval to change the zoning designation of the subject property from multifamily medium density residential to general commercial. And if both ordinances are approved tonight, then the applicant must obtain an approval from the ZBA for a Class B special use permit for the proposed car wash expansion to the subject property. And as directed by the commission, here are a list of potential conditions of approval for the Class B special use permit that staff could impose on the Class B special use permit. Please take a moment to read them. And it is important to note that these and any other conditions approved and imposed by staff and by the ZBA would run with the land regardless of ownership, and any potential change of use of the subject property would require an amendment to the Class B special use permit approval. Therefore, staff is recommending an approval of ordinance number 5051-23 and 5052-23. And this concludes my presentation, and I'm available for questions.
Very good. Any questions for staff? I do see a representative of the applicant, but before we turn to them, we'll see if any questions for staff. Commissioner Lambert?
Just if you don't mind, since this is the first time we're seeing it, can you leave that slide three up, just so that we can continue to review it? Thank you.
Here we go. All right. Any other questions for staff? All right. Does the applicant care to speak on this matter?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I could, just have a brief presentation for you. John Schmidt, agent for the applicant. Thank you again for the time this evening. Before I get started, Jeffrey Jervis unfortunately can't be here tonight. He had COVID, so just with caution, he's watching from the internet very intensely and texting back and forth. So he apologized for not being here. This is very important to him, but unfortunately he couldn't. Basically, there are no substantial changes to our application, but hearing some concerns of the neighbors and the neighborhood from the last meeting, which is, one, you know, what happens if the car wash ceases to, you know, be there anymore? And two, what happens in the interim, you know, should you give us the land use and zoning change and not get the car wash of the Class B use? So to address those concerns, and, you know, we worked with the neighbors, and we actually this morning recorded a deed restriction on the 301 Malvern. And, oh, so that was recorded this morning, and it has really two parts. Part number one is that the 301 property would be limited to the residential use. Part two, the vehicle, the use would also be limited to vehicular parking access, ingress and egress for a car wash property from South Olive only. And the second part is that it would have to be released by the city commission. We did work this with the neighbors, and they were concerned that, hey, this might get on an agenda somehow, and nobody saw it. So we actually added the advertising requirements that we typically see with land use and zoning changes, which is, which is a public, in the public newspaper, notices within 500 feet and the property being posted. That was recorded today. I believe that the applicant has went over and above with the public outreach that they've done. I hope you agree with us, and we respectfully ask for your approval this evening. I'd like to leave time for rebuttal if I need to, but hopefully we can move on. Thank you.
Very good. Any questions for the applicant before we... Yeah. Commissioner Baduzi?
I don't have any questions to ask, sir.
Okay. Do you have one for staff later, or...
Yes.
Okay. We'll bring staff back up. Any questions for the applicant? Okay. Staff, can you come back up? Commissioner Baduzi has...
Actually, I have one for the city attorney.
Okay. Staff, are you there? Could you put up that screen three? I think Commissioners wanted to have that in front of them. Yes, Commissioner Baduzi?
Yeah. So the question will be directed to our city attorney with regard to this deed restriction. Do we believe that this, is this deed restriction legally sufficient? And is it something that... Because it's requiring us as a municipality to take certain steps and actions. I just wanted to make sure the deed restriction is legally sufficient.
It is a legal document. It's recorded. The City of West Palm Beach is a third-party beneficiary of that document with benefits that are newer to it. I would say that it's a legally sufficient document. I don't think, though, however, that it's a part of what your decision is based on this evening as it relates to the zoning category, but it appears to be a legally binding document and voluntarily done without request or requirement by the city.
Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Fox?
Thank you. I also have a question for our city attorney. Back to the deed. I'm wondering, can we move forward with this motion and include the, include that the deed is going on record? Because I think one of the things that we discussed in our last meeting was that we, many of us had some concerns just about moving forward with, you know, not this applicant. I think this applicant has gone above and beyond to do everything possible to find a solution for a problem where I think there's no way he could have, could have known that this was going to happen when he purchased one car wash and turned it into another car wash and had twice as much business. And so I think he's gone above and beyond what we could expect from any business in the future. So my concern is, once we put this on the record tonight, it's basically going to be yes or no. We voted yes or no for this. And it's, so I'm wondering if one of the inclusions for our approval can include that, because the deed has been recorded with these other stipulations moving forward. In other words, it's not just an automatic that we're giving anyone who comes to us that wants additional parking or, you know, some other condition because we did it this one time, that it goes on the record that we include the deed? Thank you.
Okay. A couple of things. The deed restriction itself is a public record recorded in the Palm Beach County Public Records, and there was a book and page that was shared with you. So that is a document that is in the public records. It, however, as I was indicating to you earlier, is not part of your consideration for granting or denying the applications that are for you, before you. One is the application for the future land use change, and the conditions for granting or denying that are contained within 92-33 of your code, and also policy, I'm going to go from memory, 1.1.5, it's on your background information, I believe that's the number. As to the second ordinance that's before you, that is for the rezoning itself, and you're going to apply the standards specifically in 94-32 of the code, and the application will, applications, both of them will either pass or not pass based on those criteria. But the deed itself is a public record. It's recorded in the public records of Palm Beach County. You've heard mention of it. It's part of your record here that you've heard it, but your decision should be based on the standards and the code alone. In each future application, if there's an individual application for a future land use on an individual piece of property and a rezoning for that piece of property, you will consider the evidence that's presented for those, that specific piece, and apply the standards to that piece and those facts, and it will stand on its own. Your work here tonight is not precedent for a rezoning of a future piece of property, unless, of course, it has some relation to that specific piece of property, but it is not an automatic for anything in the future.
Commissioner Baduzi?
Thank you. And along those same lines, at least for me, for one commissioner up here, I believe that this should be the exception and not necessarily the rule, that I think that we should set the bar pretty high when it comes to rezoning from residential to commercial. And I know that we did hear from a number of residents, a number of residents that supported this rezoning. But I also have a feeling that those same residents would be here objecting strenuously to this if this was in closer proximity to their homes. So while I think that I'm okay with supporting this today, because I think it does fulfill a need, and it is for the common good, I just, I just want to make sure that there's a clear message, at least from me as one member of this DAAS, that I consider this an exception rather than, than a rule that should be followed in the future, unless there's good cause shown.
Commissioner Lambert?
I'm sorry. If I could clear your record. When you say for good cause shown, you mean that if a future applicant with a petition to rezone meets the criteria that's in your code, that you'll look at that and decide whether or not it meets the criteria?
Absolutely. To clarify, when I say for good cause shown, if they meet the criteria and they can show good cause why we should grant an exception, then I'm fine with it, just as I am here tonight.
Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you, Mayor. I have two questions, if I could. The first is, because the deed restriction was brought up, I just have a question about how that works. So the owner has put the deed restriction on their property, and city attorney, you mentioned that the city is, I forgot the term you used, is the...
Third-party beneficiary.
Third-party beneficiary of this. When and if that property ever exchanges hands in a sale, then I would presume there's a title search, and that then this deed restriction would come up. And so a sale would not be permitted until that was...
Well, it would depend on who your purchaser was, whether or not they wanted to take the property with the restrictions on it and continue the existing use, or if they wanted to do something else, they would have to come before you based on the reading of the deed itself and ask you to, you or somebody that's sitting in your place, if it's not soon, to ask you to release it.
Okay, great. But these steps would ensure that that conversation would happen?
That is the purpose of it.
Wonderful. Thank you. My second question relates to the landscaping and the egress and ingress. I appreciate the potential conditions, number two. I know that there was a lot of discussion that the entryway not to be on Malvern... I know that there was a lot of discussion that the entryway not to be on Malvern. I'm pleased to see that that's a suggested condition. Also, the enhanced landscaping. We want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to ensure a screening of this business and making sure that the residents still feel like this is a residential entrance to their neighborhood. We did have some discussion at the first reading about the egress on Olive. And I just want to revisit that conversation because if I recall correctly, it was discussed that there will be further discussion that the, um, the drawing that was presented still has to go through further staff approval. Is that correct? Can you just refresh our memory on that conversation?
Yes, that's correct. After Class B special use permit process, they still would have to obtain an informal site plan review approval, which would delve out all the details and specifics of the plan proposal for the site.
Which at that point, they would determine whether or not the extra three, I think it was stacking of cars would be needed?
Needed or not, yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fox?
Thank you. I just wanted to ask a question about, for the future, what is the obligation of this city in terms of when we permit businesses? I know that there's oftentimes that we ask for traffic studies. In this case, we probably didn't because it was a car wash that was moving into another car wash and we probably assumed we knew what the, um, what the issues might be. But I guess just going forward, now that we know traffic is, is here to stay, more people are coming, more businesses are opening, what I guess is the obligation of the city when we move forward with businesses? Just so that we can mitigate any issues like this in the future?
It depends on the proposal or the request that comes before the city. But in most cases, a traffic study is a requirement or is required for the application submitted for staff to review how a proposal would impact the surrounding community. So it's a part of our review process moving forward and now, yeah.
Any other questions, comments from the commission? Okay, we do have several cards. When I read out, I'm gonna read out three names and if you start approaching the dais. Sandy Makovich, Nancy Pullum, and Richard Pinsky. Sandy Makovich. Whichever you prefer, you could say that.
Sandy Makovich, West Palm Beach. Should you vote to allow a business into a residential neighborhood? That's the decision city commissioners must make tonight. The car wash does a lot of good works, contribute to charities, wash police cars free of charge. I find that admirable, that they can share their wealth with others. It is also their good works tax deductible a write-off. If you pass this, you are starting a trend that will continue forever. There isn't a neighborhood in West Palm Beach that would be safe from businesses who want to expand their business into another residential neighborhood, unless you're fortunate enough to own a home in a gated community or live in a historic neighborhood. The list of people the city handed to the city, I believe, was collected under less than honest communication with the neighborhood. Deed restriction with covenants is their way of trying to justify what should never have been brought before you. There is no justification for this and we must trust them to keep their word. The city has problems with low-cost housing and you're willing to vote to allow them to tear down a duplex so there are too less places for families to live. More homeless on the horizon? Commissioners, please raise your hand if you believe you would vote to allow the car wash into your neighborhood. Good, no raised hands, so you do understand the situation. Commissioner Lambert, you are in office to protect the residents and homeowners in your district, not a car wash. Let's have two more commissioners to support her on this and it will turn into a snowball that will continue to grow. The next business that comes before you with similar situation and you refuse them, I can hear them now. You voted to allow Mint Eco Car Wash into a residential neighborhood. Why not me? I'm gonna sue the city. Please, think of what you're doing. Please.
Thank you very much. Nancy Pullum?
Good evening. I'm gonna try to move very quickly through this. First, I want to say that the car, the owners of the car wash have tried and offered something that wasn't required. That is very true. And that the neighborhood's trying to be understanding. However, that, the offer protects them, the neighborhood while the car wash is there. When that property gets sold, all bets are off. The new owner can come in, say, city, I don't want this on my, my deed anymore and the city can take it off. Now, it's important to realize that the plan board report requires unity of title. So now instead of a piece of residential property and a piece of commercial property, we've got an entire block, uh, a length along Olive of general commercial zoning. So I can tell you, nobody will give that up. They don't wanna lose commercial zoning. There are any number of businesses along South Dixie, actually right across the street from the car wash, the corner store. They need parking. Everybody needs something. And so what's to turn them down now? I don't know. So there is goodwill and, and Jeff has been great to talk to and to work with. The deed restriction can be removed by any, you know, any of us could go buy that property for a good sum and, and we, the, the whole thing resets. And now it resets with general commercial zoning on it, not a mix. The other thing is, any future use can, has some by right opportunities. So it may, they may not need a Class B special use permit if I understand this process. They can put something in by right that doesn't need a special use permit and they're good to go. I can tell you Dunkin' Donuts owns property behind their property, uh, their establishment. They wanted a parking lot, the corner store. And I can name you a bunch of other properties that I know of on Dixie Highway that are Havana. This can open the floodgates and that's all, that's one of the primary concerns is that you have no control over it. And if it's a by right because it fits the general commercial, then you can't turn them down. So what do we do then? I believe this is an effort by the city to try to solve a problem, but it's a Band-Aid. And the unintended consequences, I think we're gonna be sorry about. So that was my, I'm all for Jeff getting his driveway and his parking. He's put, we're good to go with him there and him on the property. But the minute that changes, all bets are off.
Thank you very much. Richard Pinsky?
Hey, Mayor, Commissioners, Richard Pinsky. I am president of the South End Neighborhood Association. And I'm speaking tonight on behalf of SENA and thank you for the opportunity. This was not an easy decision for SENA to endorse this project as it is before you. We thank you very much on behalf of SENA for adding the deed restrictions and the other elements that you're, that you're putting into the conditions of approval. Much appreciated. There are three, there are three things that caused SENA to, to endorse this project. The first was, it's an existing business. So we were dealt the hand that something already existed there. This was not an empty parcel or a house that someone was buying to turn into a car wash. So that was the first thing we had to look at. The next was, we had an absolute mess going on, on the corner of Southern Boulevard and, and South Olive. That had to be fixed. This seemed to be the most viable situat- the most viable solution to fix that. We appreciated the effort by city staff and also by the applicant to in fact, create something that wasn't a new car wash, but just simply a driveway. That's what is being added. It's a driveway to alleviate the traffic. The other is the commercial, the number two is the commercial nature of that intersection. That is already a commercial intersection. We don't like any entrances on Olive, but that was the hand we were dealt. And the third was the popularity. I will tell you, and I appreciate, and we, we were protective of our residents in Malvern, and I will tell you that the popularity of this car wash exceeds, this was like paving a South Flagler. Matter of fact, if I had known the car wash was this popular, we probably would have suggested it for 81 South, 81 11 South Dixie as the project. I know there's gonna be folks coming in after me that are opposed. I know the folks before us are opposed, but I'm telling you, this was not easy for SENA. It's a nine to five business. Nothing's gonna go on after hours and it really is the best solution. And if I had to pick a business for a neighborhood, it would be a, a car wash. To your point, very quickly, Commissioner Peduzzi, there's always somebody next to a commercial property, whether you're one block in of Dixie, one house in. And we think they did the best job of protecting those residences by buying that piece of property and turning it into a driveway that's gonna be heavily landscaped. Thank you for your support.
Thank you very much. I have three, I'm gonna read three more names. Ryan Beckett, Galen Brannan, and Ben, uh, Burne Spurlock. Ryan Beckett?
Hello, thank you everyone. Ryan Beckett, 241 Malvern. I'm just a property in. My feelings hasn't changed. I also like to echo the sentiments that I think, you know, it kinda sets a criteria, criteria, whether it's precedent or criteria for others to follow. You know, Flanagan owns the gas station. I understand they have plans. They have a parking issue. They have four properties behind them on Malvern, that this would give them explicit criteria to do the same. I back up to the corner store. I would think it would give me criteria if they started business at the corner store that now has an issue. And, you know, I've heard a couple of the comments from the commission that, well, it was a car wash before. You know, they're such a great business, we didn't know there wasn't a traffic study. But I think, you know, I brought this up last time, there's a main difference here. There are unlimited car washes. So if we set a roadmap of criteria for other residential designations to go commercial, then I think it becomes a huge problem. And if this were to definitively, 100% solve the issue, I think I might be a little bit more swayed. But with unlimited car wash, more development, more residents, easier to get off Fl- uh, Southern Bridge from Palm Beach, and you're moving it down, anyone could have looked at this and said, if you visited the site, there's only three car spots right now. So if you bring it down, now what if they have more memberships? Does it solve the problem? So what if we've now changed residential to commercial and we come back a year later and the residents have the same problem? Think that's a big issue. Now there's a school, thousand feet down, early in the morning, afternoon pickup, and most people wanted to get their car washed on the way to work, on the way home for work. So now you've moved a, a problem a little further up Olive, just a little further down. And when I come off Malvern, it's hard for me to get down and people are gonna come down Nottingham, Malvern, off the island. So I think it's a problem. I think it's a bad criteria to give other businesses to, uh, to follow. And I'm not so sure if we kind of compromise because he's a great business, great owner. He's done really a great thing. I like him. You know, the deed restriction was great, but I don't know that this is a silver bullet. He himself said this wasn't a perfect solution. So it may just kick the can, pun intended, down the street a little bit. And that's my concern. The only thing I'd say about SENA is SENA's not an HOA. SENA is a group of voluntary people. I'm sorry if I'm mistaken, but I think he said he's friends with the owner. I think that would probably cause him to recuse himself. But it's, there's no quorum with SENA. I've never been to a SENA meeting and I live in the area. So I would just say that and I think it's a bad criteria to set. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Galen Brannan?
Good evening. Galen Brannan, 214 Malvern Road. Just wanna thank the commission for taking the time to kinda go over this issue. Between this meeting and last meeting, there's been a lot of, I think, thoughtful deliberation and it's, um, it's welcome to be seen. I think we're all here looking for the solution that works for the business and also comes on in a way that helps protect the, the neighborhood. And I think it just, what's happening here is kind of exposing a much larger issue we have here about a, how about having a framework of allowing commercial operations to kind of impede into residential neighborhoods. You know, it's important to know that, you know, once the zoning is changed to commercial, that, you know, the commission doesn't get to decide anymore if the next business is a good business or is a good fit or not, right? And decisions for the future loose use can go to the ZBA if they need a special use permit, but if not, a lot of it is permitted by right. So I think everyone can understand why residents in the neighborhood, including myself, are, you know, we're just really trying to protect the residential character of our neighborhood. In this case, the business owner is going out of their way to provide some, some assurance by adding the deed restriction of the property that severely limits the future use. I think that's something that's very much welcomed from the residents and we appreciate that. However, I just wanna say, please, please keep into consideration that it doesn't protect us for future cases. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Burl Spurlock?
Good evening, Mayor and Commission. My name's Beau Spurlock and my house is at 230 Malvern Road and I also own property at 229 Malvern Road. I wasn't going to actually speak to this tonight, but because Commissioner Lambert brought it up, I think it's probably appropriate just to make everyone aware and I alluded to it at the last meeting. I wanted to talk about what I believe to be the most negative design element of this petition, rather than the zoning. During the site plan review process, the city traffic division required the addition of a deceleration lane or a turn lane into the car wash site. It's my professional opinion that this lane is functionally unnecessary and will negatively impact the quality of life for all residents in the South End and here's why. In order to accommodate this new turn lane, an 11-foot wide by 70-foot long stretch of public green space on Olive Avenue must be removed. With only a five-foot wide landscape buffer proposed along the South Olive frontage of Mint Eco, this existing green space would go a long way towards shielding the residents to the east from the proposed commercial activities. If left in place, if this green space is left in place, there could be nearly 16 total feet of buffer width between the activities of the car wash and the street. Currently, the plan only shows five feet with no wall. Removing public green space for a fifth traffic lane runs counter to the intent of the South Olive Streetscape Project and the leaders in residence who worked so hard to make it happen. A bit over 20 years after its completion, the value of the streetscape has added to our South End neighborhood by removing unnecessary lanes of traffic and heat islands, planting street trees and making the corridor more pedestrian and bike friendly cannot be overstated. More pavement along this corridor would be a step backward for my, for a great city, in my opinion. I'm not sure why the traffic division is asking for a fifth lane of traffic to be added to South Olive. Is it for overflow stacking? Currently, the site plan shows 14 spaces, which is nearly five times what is currently existing on site right now. Or is it to slow traffic down before turning as a deceleration lane? Many, many businesses on Southern and Dixie, however, don't have deceleration lanes and those corridors have speeds, design speeds, designed speeds much greater than South Olive. Regardless of the reasoning, the requirement is out of sync with the needs of our neighborhood. The removal of this green space for a turn lane was not something that Mint Eco proposed and it's definitely not something that we as neighbors want. And I imagine if the project is approved, the green space removed and the lane built, there will be many in the South End wondering what on earth happened as they drive by. So tonight, I'm respectfully asking the commission to encourage the city traffic division to remove the requirement for the deceleration lane. I think it will be a win-win for everyone. Thank you and I appreciate your thoughtful consideration on this project.
Thank you very much. Ross Harness?
Hello, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Ross Harness, 36 and Spruth in the North End. Admittedly, it's not my neighborhood, but I'm here because we're in the middle of a housing crisis and we're getting rid of housing on this issue, but I'll get back to that in a little bit. My issue with this whole thing is the applicant is rightfully using the new issues clause of the comprehensive plan to adjust the zoning and the future land use. The new issue we have in the city is we have a housing problem. What's stopping me from going and changing my zoning on my residential property to something that allows me to build big? That's a bad precedent to set potentially for some of our residents. I would potentially agree to some. I would potentially agree to some of that. I think we need some more housing in our single-family resident space, but I know there's probably a lot of residents that may not agree to that, but this seems like a pretty, pretty easy hurdle to meet. He came in, created a new issue himself, and he's getting rezoned. The world has a new issue if we haven't built enough houses for the last several decades. Why can't I rezone my property to do the same? Second of all, I want to commend Jeff with what he's doing, and I also want to say that I hope to see him leverage the new Live Local Act with this commercial property, with residential use and the deed restriction, and build quite a bit of affordable housing on that lot. That would be great to see, the city would appreciate it. With, we saw with Flagler Station, the first affordable housing, truly affordable housing in thirty years, I believe it was leased up in less than a month. We obviously need it. This property now is available to be built up to the tallest residential, I think, for mixed-use building within a mile, and fill it with affordable housing. I say go for it. I would be very welcome of that development in my city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We do have one card from Maritza Diaz, she does not wish to speak, but she had, wanted me to read this comment. "I oppose to the zoning change. I do not want to see a driveway in front of my apartment and more people parking on Malvern Street that do not live there. Besides, I don't see so much traffic to need that change." So that's her comment. Okay. That's all the cards we have, and Commissioners, any, you, you wanted some rebuttal, Mr. Schmidt?
Just quickly, clarification.
The cards supposed to get up before the item is called? Ma'am, we, we made it very clear at the beginning, we bring the cards up before the item. So it would be unfair to let you speak, because others may come. All right? Go ahead, Mr. Schmidt. Is there a statement on it to be read? All right, let me read the statement. I'm gonna read your statement.
Could you please read it for me?
I'm gonna read it now.
Thank you.
This is from Cara Dad Diaz. "Our property, three-hundred Malvern Road, will be affected by the change in zoning and also by the demolition of these apartments to build a driveway. There is going to create a lot of traffic noise on our road. It is not fair that we, the homeowners, lose value of our property for the benefit of a new business." Okay. Thank you. All right.
Thank you, sir. I just wanted to reiterate a couple items. Number one, we will have a requirement to do a unity to unify the two properties. The reason for the unity versus a replat is that the unity, we can un-unify it. So in the future, if another owner would want to come over and remove the parking lot and build residential, they could, they could do that. With a plat, I wouldn't be able to do that, so that's the reason for the unity. Also, the deed restriction runs with the property. It limits the use on the property to a residential use, so any, if somebody else were to buy this, it limits it to a residential use or vehicle parking and access ingress and egress to the car wash property from South Olive. So to, to remove that, and any use other than that would have to come in front of you to remove the deed restriction. So whether it's a Class B use or a Class A use, any change to the three-oh-one Malvern property would have to come to you and ask for the, first, to remove this restriction. Then you would hear, you know, whether the petition was worthy of another use. So that's all I have for you.
Okay, very good. Commissioner Paduzzi?
Thank you. I'm not so sure that it's that simple to, that you can just put in there that it can revert automatically to a residential use when the zoning has been changed from multifamily residential to commercial. There'd have to be a zoning change prior to it being allowed to be used for residential.
Yes, sir, so you would have to approve that as well.
All right, any other comments or questions for staff or for the applicant? Commissioner Ward?
I have a question for staff. I just wanted to cover what, when it comes to this precedent for the surrounding area. One, are there current applications in with you all to change anything? Two, and I guess this may be a legal question, how does, how does this one property impact others in the area that would maybe want to expand? What kind of precedent is that setting?
So for your first question, I don't know if you can recall, several months ago, the Kirksey Commons Project, which was rezoned from a multifamily residential zoning district to a commercial zoning designation. So there's already examples in the past of commercial impeding into a residential district. And then for your second question, can you repeat your second question?
There was concern about the precedent that it's setting and what the criteria for the other owners would have to bring.
So for each case or each request to rezone or change future land use designation is based on a case-by-case scenario, and we, staff is required to review based on the rezoning comp plan standards, and that's how we go about reviewing and determining if we would recommend an approval or denial for such case. So it's in the code and standard of procedure that we base all our recommendations on the standards associated or applicable to such case.
President Warren and Commissioner Lambert?
My question is for staff. How difficult is it to take a property, once we've taken it from a green space and made it a black space, how difficult is it to take it back to a green space?
Well, it depends somehow. It depends. That's my best question. Answer.
Commissioner Angela Van, it's the similar same process, basically, how we're doing the commercial, changing the land use from residential to commercial, and then subsequently from residential to commercial. GC zoning, supposed to be going back to residential land use and basically going back to residential land use and a zoning, which is probably decreased, because we look at level service analysis when we do our multifamily or land use changes. So going from residential, commercial, back to residential is actually a decrease in the impact as far as traffic, as far as on, on the public facilities. So it's a similar process, just basically going back, backwards.
All right, if you are not at the podium, quit making comments from the audience. If you don't quit making them, we'll ask you to leave, okay? Thank you. Did that answer your question? Commissioner Lambert?
Wait, that was Mr. Warren.
Did you have any follow-up? Okay, Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. This is in my district, and in fact, I used to live just a few blocks from here. I've moved just a few further blocks away from it, but I'm very familiar with the issues that have come up here when talking to residents for many years, and talking to city staff, and talking to our, not only the owners, but also our police department about the issues here. I make it a general rule to, you know, not change zoning from residential to general commercial, but there's a lot of things that we're considering in this circumstance. There are a few statements that were made, and I'm, I'm very appreciative for the time and the effort that the residents who live on Malvern, other residents in the community who have attended neighborhood meetings to discuss this topic, but there were a few comments that I just want to address. One of them was a comment that someone said, "Any one of us can change the deed." And I believe that this resident was talking about any one of us, meaning purchasers. But my understanding is that there would be, there are cumbersome steps that are in place. It isn't just a matter of purchasing the land and then saying, "Oh, I want to put something else here." There are, there are many steps in place, and we've gone through those. And then another individual said, "Once it's changed to commercial, the commission won't have any right to decide what's, what goes there." But on the other slide that you had up with the, with the criteria related to the Class B special use permit, the very first one says that the only thing that can go here is what we're considering this evening, is associated with an existing car wash will be the only use allowed or permitted on this parcel. The other thing that I'm considering is, we've talked a lot about other, about precedent being set, and other commercial businesses that are in the area, and I certainly understand, and we, I am a huge advocate for trying to create better parking solutions on South Dixie that has been a constant issue for the neighboring residents and the neighborhoods that are along South Dixie, but I don't believe that this is a parking issue. What I've been hearing for years is that it's a safety issue along Southern and onto Olive, and that, I also heard one of the residents say that there's enough stacking now, I think was mentioned maybe three times as many cars can be stacked in there. And if I recall correctly, the owner at the first reading mentioned that they will now be able to process cars at a faster rate than they can stack them, and so that this overflow onto Olive and onto Southern will essentially not be a problem anymore. So I really believe that a tremendous amount of consideration and collaboration, not only of the owner, but of our city staff, of, of residents, of residents who are even not in favor of it tonight, who have met with the owner, who have met with myself and others, that we've genuinely tried to find a thoughtful solution, and I do support this solution here tonight. So if there's no other questions, Mayor, I'll make a motion.
Commissioner Fox, then?
Sorry, I have one more question. I just wanted to go back to something Mr. Schmidt said about the deed. So it said the permitted uses that will go along with the deed will be residential use or vehicular parking. So I just want to clarify, from the zoning that we would be changing tonight, really vehicular parking would be the only thing allowed in the zoning, and the residential wouldn't be allowed, they would have to come back to change it back to residential.
That is correct.
But so in the deed, though, essentially, it's saying that the only use is parking going forward, more or less.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Lambert, if you want to make a motion?
Thank you. I move to approve ordinance number five-zero-five-one-dash-two-three, a future land use map amendment to change the future land use designation of approximately zero-point-one-seven-five acres located at three-oh-one Malvern Road from multifamily to commercial. This motion is based upon the factual testimony presented, the application submitted, the staff report, the recommendation of the planning board, and the findings that the request meets the new issue standard of future land use, one-point-one-point-five of the city's comprehensive plan.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, discussion? Hearing none. Madam Kirk, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number five-zero-five-one-dash-two-three, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, amending the future land use map of the comprehensive plan of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, by changing the future land use designation of one parcel located at three-oh-one Malvern Road, approximately zero-point-one-seven-five acres from multifamily to commercial, declaring the proposed amendment to the future land use map to be consistent with all other elements of the comprehensive plan of the city, providing for an effective date and for other purposes.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion passes unanimously. Commissioner Lambert?
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number five-zero-five-two-dash-two-three, a rezoning to change the zoning designation of approximately zero-point-one-seven-five acres located at three-oh-one Malvern from multifamily medium-density residential MF twenty to general commercial. This motion is based upon the application submitted, the staff report, factual testimony, the recommendation of the planning board, and the findings that the request complies with the comprehensive plan and the standards in section ninety-four dash thirty-two of the city's zoning and land development regulations.
Second.
It's been moved in second, discussion? Madam Kirk, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number five-zero-five-two-dash-two-three, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, amending the zoning map of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, by rezoning one parcel located at three-oh-one Malvern Road, approximately zero-point-one-seven-five acres from multifamily medium-density MF two-zero residential to general commercial, declaring this zoning map amendment to be consistent with the comprehensive plan of the city, revising the zoning map of the city accordingly, providing for an effective date and for other purposes.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item eleven-point-two, public hearing and second reading of ordinance number fifty-fifty-four dash twenty-three, a city initiated request for a future land use map amendment to change the future land use designation of one-point-five-one-nine acres of land located at fourteen-hundred Henrietta Avenue from Community Service CS to multifamily MF. And, public hearing and second reading of ordinance number fifty-fifty-five-dash-twenty-three, a city initiated request for a rezoning to change the zoning designation of one-point-five-one-nine acres of land located at fourteen-hundred Henrietta Avenue from Coleman Park Community Service, CPCS, to Coleman Park Multifamily Low Density, CPMF fourteen.
Mayor Commissioner Angela Van Pennen is on an administrative. It's the second reading, there have been no changes since first reading.
All right, any questions, comments, this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number five-zero-five-four-dash-two-three, change-
I don't have a card on this. Where is it? Okay. Okay, Mr. Cleveland, if you have, Michael Cleveland.
Thanks again, Michael Cleveland, West Palm. Some time ago, prior to Mr. Bosley receiving his partial property for vegetation purposes, I believe it was deemed by this body or somewhere in the city that this property was uninhabitable, uninhabitable for human consumption, use of whatever. I couldn't find that in my research, however. I believe, Mayor, it was, your, your presence voted for Mary Place during the time it was being discussed, and that turned out to be a tragedy. And Housing Authority haven't even finished Mary Place, and they've been working on that for twelve years. Dunbar was built for senior citizens, allegedly, and I think it's only twelve percent black, but most of the families in Dunbar come from Miami. And they're not black. Reason why I throw that out is because the Housing Authority are not good neighbors. You say they are, I say they're not. Proof is in the pudding, look around the complexes around the city, and every location in, most of the complaints and troubles with these people. What I really think the city should do when they have such first property they want to give away, it should be something that says, "We want to go out and find the best developer and find out what they're able to put on that site to give it to them." Because the Housing Authority, they're gonna put something on there, they're not slum lords, but then they're not good landlords either. And that particular area, now with the Bright Line train hub there, you open up Henrietta both directions to lead to downtown, everybody shortcut in that area. The first time a child is hurt in that, in that area, maybe you remember that somebody said that it's not a good idea. I would ask that you not vote up on that, and I'll be there.
Thank you very much. Okay, Commissioner Ward, I think you were making a motion?
I was, thank you. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number five-zero-five-four-dash-two-three, changing the future land use designation of one-point-one-fi- one-point-five-one-nine acres located at fourteen-hundred Henrietta Avenue from Community Service to multifamily. This motion is based on the application submitted, the staff report, factual testimony, the recommendation of the planning board, and the findings that the request complies with the provisions of chapter one six-three Florida statutes in the city's comprehensive plan.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, discussion?
I'd just like to say something, because I live right near this area, and I, I disagree that the West Palm Beach Housing Authority doesn't make good projects. I think that along Kirksey, it looks fantastic what they've done. I go to Mary Place all the time, and the housing- I go to Mary Place all the time and the Housing Authority is not the problem there. It's some of the people that don't live in Mary Place that are the problem. And I want those residents to know that I think that their Mary Place is beautiful. It's a cute place to drive through. They have a home, their first home, that some of these, the people that live in, the actual homeownership versus the rentals. And so that's why I'm supporting this.
Okay, any other discussion on the motion? If not, Madam Kirk, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number five zero five four dash two three, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, amending the future land use map of the comprehensive plan of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida by changing the future land use designation of the parcel located at one four zero zero Henrietta Avenue and comprised of one point five one nine acres from Community Service to multifamily. Declaring the proposed amendment to the future land use map to be consistent with all other elements of the comprehensive plan of the city, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Commissioner Ward.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number five zero five five dash two three to rezone one point five one nine acres located at fourteen hundred Henrietta Avenue from Coleman Park Community Service to Coleman Park Multifamily Low Density Residential. This motion is based upon the application submitted, the staff report, the testimony given, the recommendation of the planning board, along with the findings of the rezoning standards found in section ninety four dash three two of the city zoning and land development regulations.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
They're moved in second, discussion. Hearing none. Madam Kirk, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number five zero five five dash two three, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, amending the zoning map of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida by rezoning the parcel located at one four zero zero Henrietta Avenue and comprised of one point five one nine acres from Coleman Park Community Service CPCs to Coleman Park Multifamily Low Density Residential CP dash MF one four, residential district. Declaring this zoning map amendment to be consistent with the comprehensive plan of the city, revising the zoning map of the city accordingly, providing for an effective date and for other purposes.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item eleven point three, public hearing and second reading of ordinance number five zero five seven dash twenty-three regarding a future land use map amendment to change the future land use designation of approximately zero point six zero acres located at forty eight oh one South Dixie Highway from Commercial C to Commercial East CE. And, public hearing and second reading of ordinance number five zero five eight dash twenty-three regarding a rezoning to change zoning designation of approximately zero point six zero acres located at forty eight oh one South Dixie Highway from Single Family High Density SF fourteen to Neighborhood Commercial.
Alexis Singalier Planner, no changes have been made since first reading.
Thank you very much. Any questions of staff, comments? If not, do we have any cards on this? Eleven point three. All right, Sandy Makovich, eleven point three.
She, she lost.
Okay, I just need to call her name out for the record, so she knew we called her. Okay, if there are no other cards, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number five zero five seven dash two three, a future land use map amendment to change the future land use designation of approximately zero point six zero acres located at four eight zero one South Dixie Highway from Commercial C to Commercial East CE. This motion is based upon the factual testimony presented, the application submitted, the staff report, the recommendation of the planning board, the findings that the request complies with the provisions of chapter one six three Florida statutes meets the new issue standard of future land use policy, one point one point five of the city's comprehensive plan.
Second.
They're moved in second, discussion. Madam Kirk, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number five zero five seven dash two three, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, amending the future land use map of the comprehensive plan of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida by changing the future land use designation of one parcel located at four eight zero one South Dixie Highway, approximately zero point six zero acres from Commercial C to Commercial East CE. Declaring the proposed amendment to the future land use map to be consistent with all, with all other elements of the comprehensive plan of the city, providing for an effective date and for other purposes.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number five zero five eight dash two three, a rezoning to change the zoning designation of approximately zero point six zero acres located at four eight zero one South Dixie Highway from Single Family High Density SF fourteen to Neighborhood Commercial NC. This motion is based upon the application submitted, the staff report, factual testimony, the recommendation of the planning board, the findings that the request complies with the comprehensive plan and the standards in section ninety four dash thirty-two of the city's zoning and land development regulations.
They're moved in second, discussion. Madam Kirk, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number five zero five eight dash two three, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, amending the zoning map of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida by rezoning one parcel located at four eight zero one South Dixie Highway, approximately zero point six zero acres from Single Family High Density SF dash one four, residential to neighborhood commercial NC. Declaring this zoning map amendment to be consistent with the comprehensive plan of the city, revising the zoning map of the city accordingly, providing for an effective date and for other purposes.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Now it's time to move on to public comment. We have a few cards here, so I will read the names out and approach the podium. Sandy Makovich, here, okay. Fiona Ross and Richard Leonard.
Thank you very much, Mayor James. May the peace of the Lord be with you, members of the dais, and also with you. I've come here in the name of God to rid evil from our land. I have been waiting weeks to do this, but I had to wait till this afternoon when I saw the news of former President Trump signing that bond paperwork in Georgia. So they said if he committed a crime, he would have to surrender. I like to report a crime in progress. There's a sex offender rapist that's in our community, in our community, and they did not come across the southern border like you were told in twenty sixteen. Donald Trump needs to register with the Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office. He is in violation right now. And this is so sweet because last year they made sure that Donald Trump could have residency at Mar-a-Lago even though the people petitioned against it. They said, you know, it's a private club, you can't do that. But they went ahead and bent the law, bent the law for him. And so now he is held accountable to that to this day. Congratulations to me. So what's next? I'd say we got to take on Ron DeSantis next, so I'm going to need some people to stand with me. I know Commissioner Ward believes in a woman being equal to a man, that a woman should be able to say what she wants to do with her body. So I'm sure she's going to be united with me. Commissioner Paduzzi, you have spent a lifetime of excellence helping my community with HIV prevention. And I know you're not going to stand back now that they say like transgender people don't get access to healthcare and stuff like that, so he's a fighter. Commissioner Fox did all this work with environmental protections and green transportation. I know you're not going to stand by while the guy that didn't even clean up Piney Point wants to now pave the roads with gypsum phosphate mining residue, so not a chance. If you're with me. Mayor James, you know, the leadership beacon of our city, our wonderful Harvard educated mayor, he is not going to stand by and watch Ron DeSantis make a mockery of education teaching us that slavery is just an acceptable practice. And last but not least, Madam President, I know you're not going to stand by when Governor DeSantis says that we're going to get rid of immigrants and migrant workers in our community because they're not going to replace those with good paying jobs. They're going to replace that with prison labor. And they're trying to restart slavery in this country, so that's what's going on. So I'm going to stand today. They say all it takes is one person to stand, so I'm going to be that person to stand for everyone else. And I'm not going to take, you know, I'm not going to be told that I can't use the bathroom of my choice by a governor that's been caught on camera grooming at a graduation party.
Thank you very much, thank you. Richard Leonard had given this card, put it on a general comment, but it was really for the Mint Eco, he didn't want to speak. I support Mint Eco rezoning, that was Richard Leonard. Okay, Michael Cleveland and Ross Harness.
Good evening, good. Well, after the last meeting, it dawned on me that perhaps I would ask you guys to revisit the timeframe when the public comment is held. I would ask that you consider it to be held immediately after the consent calendar. Next page. Twenty-third Street, the development that's going on in Northwood at twenty-fifth Street and Northwood Road and from Broadway to Railroad Avenue of Greenwood is blocking the exit from Pleasant City on the west side. So I'm going to ask if you can reconsider opening Twenty-third Street back to an eastbound and westbound lane as far as the people from Pleasant City just want to have the one way east to get out. The sticks. Anyone on the dais related to or know anybody that has given information from the sticks? I'm a descendant, fourth generation, from the people who was forced off the island of the sticks. Now, if you, if you have information saying that it didn't happen, then you let me know. Because my grandmother told me it happened. Now, if you weren't there, zip, keep it closed because you don't know what you're saying. It happened. Don't let the white folks tell you Uncle Tom's or whatever, or yes, yes, Negroes, that it didn't happen. It happened. They ain't there now. Next page. Related group. I'm sure some of you guys are in related groups pocket, pretty deep, contribute to your campaign. Now they come in Pleasant City after they finish this project over here to whatever home flagger. They have mentioned that they will be coming over in Pleasant City. My point in bringing that up is that the same thing occurred in Palm Beach when the black folks built White Hall, the hotel, and the museum. They don't want to look out their windows and see black folks. So now the related has mentioned that once they finish the Rich Carlton, that they're going to come in and start acquiring property in Pleasant City because I guess they still don't want to look over and see black folks. And I'm going to respond to your comment later on, I don't have time today. But you are a liar about Pleasant City and Mary Place. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much, Ross Harness.
Hello, Mayor and Commissioners, once again. My name is Ross Harness, Thirty-sixth and Spruce in the North End. I want to take the absolute pleasure I have to formally introduce myself to you as the appointed president of Connect West Palm Beach, Inc., the five oh one C three nonprofit in the city. If you're not aware, the organization was founded in two thousand seventeen due to some circumstances and COVID, kind of took a little dormant period, but we're reviving it. We hope to build public support for walkable neighborhoods, bikeable streets, better public spaces, hopefully some public transit in the city. Just hoping to make it a better place. There needs to be a voice out in the city, and I know that there are some dormant voices of residents. I have this little mailing list that's gone from three people to forty-five people before I joined it with the Connect West Palm Beach group that they have. And it's currently about seven hundred people. So we're growing fast. I hope to be up here a lot more in this capacity in front of the group. And I hope to see some very positive changes in the city. I know that it's needed, I know that we're trying, but we could try a little harder. There's a lot of free stuff that you guys could do to make some things for residents a little better and make this a little bit more of a human centered city. Because right now it's basically just a car sewer, and we have trouble building houses. And we have a lot of people that need some houses around here. So look forward to potentially working with the city, or maybe not, and trying to increase some support for some things that this city could definitely use around town. Look forward to seeing you around, thanks.
Thank you very much. That's all the cards. Now we'll go to comments from members of the dais, and we will begin with Madam President Warren.
Thank you, Mayor. I had the opportunity to attend the Florida League of Cities meeting in Orlando. And it was very nice to hear the National President of the League of Cities mention West Palm Beach and celebrate our outstanding efforts and the eight point one million dollar infrastructure grant. And she recommended that other municipalities reach out to us to find out how we were able to accomplish such an amazing feat for our community in order to ensure that the most historically underserved, excuse me, under-resourced area receive the support that it needs, the infrastructure support that it needs. August is National Black Business Month, as stated in the mayor's proclamation. And in celebration of that, Emery Sorrell and Mosaic will be hosting a community mixer on Thursday, August the twenty-fourth, from six P M. At fifty-eight forty Corporate Parkway Suite Number two fifty, where the guest will be the Honorable Stephen K. Benjamin. And I do encourage everyone to come out, that is in District Two. We welcome you to come and celebrate Black Business Month. Nicole Cummings is hosting the STEM in the City that is being presented by the city and several other sponsors. But I really wanted to take a moment to acknowledge Nicole Cummings is a brilliant, beautiful rocket scientist. And Dr. Brian Coleman, who is, will be among the panel. Dr. Coleman is also the president of T. Lee Roy Jefferson Medical Society, which we know Mr. Dr. Jefferson was the first black physician, also known as the Bicycle Doctor here in West Palm Beach. Also like to recognize Shawna Hawkins and Everett Fennell of ECF Engineering Consulting that will also be on the panel. So it'll be a great group of people that will be presenting for STEM in the city. And I'm sure that we'll hear more about that from our mayor. And I wanted to say kudos to the city, kudos to Mr. Hayden, and congratulations to those that have been able to submit their grant application, the small minority and women owned businesses that are the recipients of the city's first ever grant of this nature. I think that it says a lot about the commission, about this dais, to recognize the importance of our small businesses. I've said it before and I'll say it again, that our small businesses employ people from West Palm Beach. They give jobs to people that live and work within the vicinity of where those jobs are offered. So I am very happy that we were able to support those businesses. Congratulations to The Grand. And I am particularly proud of the ribbon cutting that took place at The Grand because I love the fact that they did a first look effort for city staff to allow city staff the opportunity to live where they work. We often talk about West Palm Beach not offering affordable workforce housing. And here at The Grand, they did an amazing effort of offering one-third affordable, one-third workforce, and one-third market rate without any type of separation of those units, that all of them are the same, they're miniaturized in the exact same way. And that was tremendous, tremendous. And I'm sure that my colleagues that were able to participate in that will comment further. I would like to acknowledge that being on the commission is a lot, it involves a lot more than what people see when they come to the meetings, that it does involve a lot of other meetings outside of those that are here from this room. And all of us are members of committees, we're members of different groups. We attend community meetings, we attend workshops, we attend trainings, we do the things behind the scenes that are necessary in order to make the best decisions that we can as we move forward and to really be connected to the community, to hear from the community. And I'd just like to say that there have been, that there are times when I look at us and I know that we are putting all of the effort that we have into supporting the community the best way that we can. And we do that while having jobs, while having. having families, while doing the things that we do to, uh, support our, our neighborhoods. And I think that sometimes it can be a bit, it, it can be, um, very hard to make it to every single meeting on time and to do all of the things that are necessary. And I would like to propose that as we move forward, that we consider a work-life balance opportunity and think of, um, perhaps a summer, uh, where there's a month off of no formal city commission meetings and no formal ci- city commission workshop at one time during, during our summer month that will allow the dais the opportunity to spend time with their family, to do things that are necessary to achieve that work-life balance. Because I know that it is important that in order to serve the best way that we can, that we need to be able to sustain ourselves as well, that we need to understand that it is okay to step back and to have rest and to do the things that we need to do in order to be the best that we can on this dais. So I do recommend that we identify a time during the summer to not have a formal, uh, city meeting. And I also recommend that we, uh, consider, uh, that, that we consider a bye month and that we consider a bye week during December to have time with family as well, without having a formal city commission workshop or city commission meeting. Um, and I would recommend that that bye week be, uh, the bye week that is, um, closest to the national holiday that is recommended and that is recognized in December. And people celebrate it differently, but it's a, it's a national time of celebration and family, and I want to see that our families have the opportunity to enjoy each of us as well. Um, so I'd like to, um, bring that forward for consideration. I would also like to, um, look at the spending limits that the city has, which has been, um, identified by ordinance, that the amount that is allowed for each event is, is a maximum of five hundred dollars. I believe that this ordinance was put in place some time ago, and with inflation and the times, uh, changing, that we see a lot of ticket prices that are, that are exceeding three hundred, four hundred, some five hundred dollar ticket prices, and where the commissioners are, um, supporting, uh, the organizations that are supporting the community. These, what I'm referring to is the ticket prices for, uh, community-based or nonprofit organizations. And I strongly feel that it is important for us to support the organizations that are supporting the most vul- vulnerable people in our community, and that is our nonprofits, that is our community-based organizations. And I would like to see that we take that into consideration as we look at, uh, at the upcoming budget and the discussions on what that budget looks like and what, um, the rules are and how, how this, um, this, this ordinance and whether or not this is an opportunity for a revision. I do believe that a lot of time has transpired, and we have had very few changes as it relates to this body and to the considerations that this body has had. Additionally, um, I, I recognize the, uh, Madam Administrator and Ms. Supran and staff for, um, doing something that I don't think that the city has ever seen before, where the COLA, um, the cost of living, it reflects really and truly, um, or the cost of living, uh, adjustment reflects our ability or our desire to try to keep staff's salary on point with, uh, increases in, uh, and rents, increases in insurances, and increases in so many other things in society. Um, and please help me, um, Madam Administrator and ma- maybe Madam City Attorney, from my recollection, though, during this millennium since nineteen ninety-nine, and, um, please, uh, help me with the information, because I do need you, I do need your support, um, and, uh, just to provide more information to my colleagues as we move forward in these discussions. But my recollection, I believe that the city, that this body has not received an increase, uh, or, excuse me, has received two increases within the last twenty-plus years. And I don't know if you know that offhand, or if that's something that will require additional research from you, but do you have an idea of when the last time was that this body reviewed the compensation for the commission?
Madam President, I can only speak in the context of what has now almost been four years, and it has not been done. So since the city attorney has been here for, maybe not the inception of the city, but, um, she may have a deeper history.
I can tell you at least back to Mayor Moye's term, during the end of that term, I believe there was an adjustment to salaries for this body, but for that I would have to do additional research. I know that it probably was quite some time had elapsed since that occurred too, probably at least ten-plus years. So you're probably correct two times in the last twenty years.
Thank you. And, and I think that that's, um, an exorbitant amount of time, and I, and I appreciate, uh, my colleagues and their humility for no one, uh, wanting to, uh, raise this as an issue, especially considering that the city has gone through, um, quite a few times where we've had to make sure that, uh, we've put the staff first and we've put services, uh, first. And I don't believe that this is a compromise of that. Um, when I think of the fact that our mayor is also a full-time employee and has, uh, been excluded from the opportunity to have a, a cost of living increase, I think that's a grave oversight as well. I believe that when we, um, consider the mayor's salary, that the mayor should be eligible to receive and, um, an increase, uh, annually, um, if there is an increase that is provided to the staff, if there's an increase that is provided to the staff. I don't know whether or not that is feasible, but I do recognize that, um, by our charter, that our mayor is in fact a full-time employee. And I, and I, um, I think that the responsibility of running a city the size of West Palm Beach, with all of the dynamics that we have, with all of the, the development, with all of the balance that is necessary, um, and in recognizing that, uh, a cost of living increase has been, uh, provided to the majority of the staff, I think that the mayor would probably be on the lower end of the executive team's salaries after that occurs. And I don't, I just don't feel that, and that that is the appropriate way to lead our city. I believe that the, the CEO of the city should be, that we should be attracting the best qualified people that will be able to sit in the seat of the mayor. And I believe that in order to do that, that we need to be intentional in what the compensation is for the position. And I would love it if, uh, my colleagues would, uh, take the time to consider my comments. And, uh, Madam Administrator, if you would be able to work with, um, finance, and if there's information that you can provide to come back to us, what, so that I can know whether or not my assumptions are on point, and then this body can move forward and make a recommendation to direct staff on how to proceed as it relates to commission compensation.
If I could respond, Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I, I think when, and certainly we will do what the board, uh, directs here, but I would ask that the board keep in mind where we are in the process with the adoption of the balanced budget. So statutorily, you have two public hearings in September that you have to adopt the budget. We are sitting in mid-August, so there is a very, very short type, uh, uh, tight window. I presented to the board back in July, a draft balanced budget. We came back and then presented a balanced tentative budget. So your budget for FY twenty-four, as we speak, for all practical purposes, is balanced. I have perhaps a small window to reshuffle, uh, some of the funds in the budget, depending on how much additional state shared revenue that we get above and beyond what is in the, uh, baked in the tentative balanced budget. If I can take you back to that discussion, we, I think Ms. Supran mentioned that part of the presentation, where we had built into the balanced budget a flat revenue stream for state shared revenue, because we were still waiting on the state to give us those numbers, and they were late. And as of today, I sent an email asking for an update. As of Friday, I did not have an update on the state shared revenue. With all of that being said, if there is an opportunity, and that's the direction that the board, uh, wants to, uh, want to go in, depending on now in the second, uh, September budget adoption hearing, whatever the board decides, depending on the amount of additional state shared revenue, not the baseline, the additional, if that can be absorbed, then you can build that into your balanced budget. That would be the p- preferred method to do that, because you want the operating increases to be built into your operating budget. Let's say worst-case scenario, we don't have enough additional state shared revenue to roll in what is the pleasure of the board. We can't get it into the operating budget for FY twenty-four. The way that we would then have to do it is that for the first year in FY twenty-four only, and I need to qualify this, would be for that first year in FY twenty-four, if the board wanted to proceed in that direction, I could take that money out of the general fund discretionary, uh, fund, and then bake it into the budget with one-time funding for FY twenty-four, roll it into your operating budget for FY twenty-five. So those would be the two methodologies, depending on a timing issue. But certainly I will work, uh, to do what the board wants to do, but just, uh, giving you advance notice, those would be my only two options at this point, because the tentative budget is already balanced for FY twenty-four.
O- o- on that, uh, in that regard, why don't you work with H R on, um, a percentage increase to at least look at, and then meet with the individual commissioners and come up with a plan for an increase based upon, I don't know if you do salary surveys or whatever, for the, for the commissioners. And sometime between now and the first meeting, met, meet with the commissioners, see what, how big of a bucket you would need, uh, and to see if those numbers that you all come up with are acceptable to the commissioners. So, once we know how big the bucket is, we could see if the state revenues or that delta is sufficient, or what kind of impact it would have, and at least prior to the last public budget meeting, we, we can maybe come up with a plan, at least come up with a target number that you've discussed with the commissioners to, to see if it's something that works for them, and then we could see if it is a fundable, if it's achievable.
Okay, Mayor, can I ask you to consider maybe just a slight modification to that?
Sure, sure.
To, to dispense with doing any type of a salary survey. That is very time-consuming, and when you're looking at setting salaries for policymakers, you, you, we're looking at then trying to identify, uh, policymakers whose function is pretty identical or very similar to the dynamics that this particular body has. And I don't know that we can do that, because, I mean, we are dealing with a city that is a fast-growing city, and you all are very engaged. So if I can just look at perhaps maybe, um, increases that would start at a minimum, the five percent COLA, because that's the standard, and then, based on our recommendation, would go no higher than the twenty percent total, that then would be consistent with what we're doing across the board with city employees. And if that twenty percent doesn't give the board a comfort level, then certainly we can go back and look at something higher. But I would like to start between five percent on the low end and twenty percent on the high end, and see if I can bake those numbers in that delta.
Why don't you just start with the twenty percent?
Uh, certainly. That direction really helps.
I mean, that's, that's basically what we did with our employees. Start with the twenty percent, see what that number looks like.
Okay.
And, you know, have conversations with the commissioners and see if that's something that, that they can live with, and then that'll tell us what our target is. And then we can see if we can work. A- any objection to that approach, uh, commissioners? Nothing baked yet, it's just giving us something for the purposes of discussion.
No objection.
Before we move to the, before we lose the opportunity with the budget and where it is. It'll give staff an ability to kind of come up with something to talk to you all about.
Yes, I agree. I have enough of a direction.
Okay. Did you see enough head nods?
Yes.
Okay. All right, very good. All right, any other part of your comments?
Sir, as the commission president, that concludes my comments.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Fox?
Oh, Ms. Mr. Mayor.
Oh, yes.
I'm sorry, pardon my interruption. The city attorney.
Oh, yes.
Asked me, it, does, uh, Commissioner Warren have an idea, or do you want me to talk to commissioners individually? How much of an increase are we, do you have in mind in terms of the discretionary spending on the tickets from the five hundred dollars to, or are we looking at maybe doubling that?
I'm looking at doubling that. It would be, it would be my recommendation that we consider, uh, five hundred dollars per ticket.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Kimberly.
Okay. Commissioner Fox?
Thank you so much, Mayor. Um, in two thousand and eighteen or nineteen, there was a heat map study that was done for the city to identify the hotspots. And one of the areas that came back as the hottest in our city was the historic northwest. So one of the solutions they came up with at the time was to add more trees, um, but because of COVID, that plan got pushed back, um, until recently. And so the Sustainability Department has done a really excellent job communicating with the neighbors and getting the news out that this tree program is coming back. But right now, it has not been a top priority for that neighborhood. They are struggling with issues that sidewalks have sinkholes, and there are illegal dumping issues that are leading to extra raccoons in the neighborhood. Um, there are trees that are already overgrown and, um, not being maintained at all. So we had a good meeting last week with, um, the Sustainability Team, and we decided that we are going to put that program on hold for now while we identify some other issues where we could, um, prioritize the quality of life issues. So I wanted to mention it first, because we already have these trees. There's about a hundred. So if there's any other neighbors that you know that are looking for native trees that might be interested, please get in touch with Penny. But I also wanted to talk a little bit about, um, some of the issues that they're having with the current trees in the historic northwest. There's about ninety percent renters in that area, and it is up to the owners to maintain the trees that are already there. And so, especially now that we're coming on hurricane season, there's a lot of overgrown trees. They're, they're growing into the utility poles. They're blocking in the signs, um, the street signs, which makes it very dangerous for drivers. And I'm just wondering if there's any approaches that we can take as a city to help them look into the trees that they have, try to maintain them better. I don't know if getting code enforcement involved is really that productive, because I think many of the owners that are in that neighborhood don't live there. I don't think that they are paying enough attention to the safety hazards. So I wasn't sure, I wanted to bring it to this board. I can also, um, talk to the CRA Executive Director to see if there's any funding, but I just wanted to ask if there's any provisions that we could look into to help neighborhoods maintain their trees where, um, you know, it becomes a hazard, where if, if a tree catches on fire, then it's going to be for us to, to deal with anyway. So is there a way that we could be more proactive, especially now in terms of, um, just looking at the season that we're in? So I don't know if that's something we can talk about, or if there's any ideas.
Commissioner Fox, that's something that I would need to really kind of maybe do some, uh, research on. I know we do have, um, neighborhoods where, uh, the trees and the swells are their responsibility, but there was a program put on the books maybe sometime back where the city took over that responsibility. Let me do some due diligence and then report back, because I don't want to give the board inaccurate information, but I'll look into that and follow up.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Uh, I wanted to say a huge congratulations to our new Public Works Director, Leon Pender. I had the chance to tell some of, um, residents in, in a few neighborhoods last week, and I think it's safe to say that he has a pretty huge, um, support group and fan club, and they are all wishing him the best. I think this is one of the best possible, um, choices that we could have made. He knows the neighborhoods, so, all the neighborhoods so well. He's so active, coming to the community. He's so active, coming to community meetings for years. Many people remember him from the previous jobs that he had with the department over the years. So I just want to say a huge congratulations to him that we are all big supporters. I wanted to mention that on Wednesday, there will be a State of the Historic Roosevelt High School event, presented by School Board Member Edward, Edward Ferguson. It will be August twenty-third, Wednesday night, at Roosevelt Middle School, starting at six PM. It will be to discuss the future of reviving the high school. And all are welcome, and that's all I have, thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Peduzzi?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank President Warren for her comments. Um, I think they are timely. We have addressed some income inequities with regard to our employees. And certainly, none of us got into public service or elective office with the desire to, to get rich. But also, with that being said, none of us came into this taking a vow of poverty. Um, and I think this is especially true with our chief executive position, with the mayor's office. Our mayor, if I, if I know the numbers correctly, which I'm not even sure I have the numbers correct, but from my calculations, our mayor makes less than half of the top salary in this city. Commissioners make one-eighth, one-eighth of the top salary in the city. So I think that those certainly need to be addressed with the work that we all put in, and especially the top, you know, the mayor is here all the time. He, he really puts in a lot of time and effort. And I think that position is woefully underpaid. Um, I'm concerned, especially with that particular position, that a twenty percent increase just does not go far enough to, you know, put that position... It doesn't take into account the, the gravity that that position has to deal with. Really, if he's at, at half of the top salary, by increasing it twenty percent, puts it just a little more than half of the top salary. Um, and I think that it probably needs to be greater than that, specifically with that position. But, thank you, President Warren, for bringing that up. And I look forward to hearing from my colleagues.
Uh, Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you, I also wanted to thank Commissioner Warren. I know you're never one to shy away from a difficult topic. And you know, I hire legal staff at all ranges of the salary spectrum. And even though those conversations are often one-on-one, they're extremely difficult. So having this conversation in the public is, is not fun, but it is a necessary conversation to have. So I look forward to future conversations on that. Um, I know that a few of our residents came up and spoke about the necessity for more workforce and affordable housing. I would just love to encourage those same residents who spoke in favor of that tonight to continue to follow the eighty-one eleven South Dixie project that now is proposing ninety units of workforce and affordable housing, as well as many other projects that are going on in our city. Um, and to that point, I was recently speaking with some firefighters who were not aware of the First Look program. And I know that I saw the email that went out a couple of times to all of our staff about the First Look program. However, I would just love for us as administration to think about those individuals who might not be at their email every day and just making sure that we're providing other forms of communication for these amazing opportunities, because I know we would love, not only for our first responders, but also all of our city staff to have opportunity to live in our wonderful city of West Palm Beach. Um, I wanted to remind residents of the Boys and Girls Club Community Meetings that I've mentioned in the past. One is coming up tomorrow at six PM, August twenty-second. And then the next one is Saturday, September second, at ten AM. So I'm sorry, the one tomorrow is at six PM, the one on Saturday, September second, is at ten AM. Both are at the Cox Science Center in the STEM building that's just across the street from the Science Center. Um, the Boys and Girls Club is proposing a new community center for the neighborhood. And I would just love it if everybody who was interested had an opportunity to hear their plans and contribute feedback. And then finally, I have a, you guys know I'm always up for an adventure. And, um, I think many of you have either visited or heard about the September eleventh stair climb that our firefighters host every year. It is quite inspiring to see these individuals climb a hundred and ten stairs in memory of those who we lost during nine eleven. And we jokingly discussed last year putting together a team. So I am happy to say that I have acquired a coveted spot for us, for anybody on this dais. And if we don't fill all of the spots for, for any of you out there, the mayor's already leaving. We can divide the hundred and ten flights, I believe, up to four or five individuals who can put together this team. So it is on Sunday, September tenth, I believe it's a Sunday. Um, it's at five fifteen North Olive, September tenth. The program, I think you can show up at eight AM, the program starts at nine AM. I know that the mayor usually speaks of national, beautiful national anthem. Um, but I would, I would love to put together a team, whether that's with anybody here, our commission aides. I know I roped Nathan into five Ks before. Um, but I, I just think it's a, a great way for us to support our first responders. And, um, the fundraising that they raise at that event goes to support pediatric oncology. And, um, I just think this would be something that could be fun to do together. So, let me know, thanks.
Parenthood is not enough of an adventure for you? I said parenthood is not enough of an adventure for you. Y'all heard that, didn't you? Commissioner Ward?
I mean, I'm, I'm with you on the stairs. I, I will not be carrying my toddler, she's like forty-seven pounds now. Um, but I will join you for sure, that sounds like a great event, I appreciate it. Um, thank you, Commissioner Warren, and for everyone's comments tonight. I love that we've been more on the discussion basis. And I just wanted to add one more thing to that. Um, given that there's been a lot of conversations and I've been getting commentary about increased speeding, traffic calming, where are police stationed? How is it working? How's the overtime working and that oversight? Um, and I would love it if maybe the, just because, I know, I go to the meetings that the, that the chief holds every month and learn about it. But I think it would be beneficial for all of us to kind of sit down and have that discussion again, now that stratified policing has been in play for a while, they're using that data. How are they using it, where are people? And I just think an overview in more detail would be beneficial for us as a workshop idea, given that. Um, and again, how, you know, if there's traffic, if there's speeding here, why, why are they choosing this? Or where are people? I just feel like I try to pay attention as much as possible and I still can't really kind of grapple how, how things are handled and which divisions are. And so I think that that would be really important. Um, and to the point about going to a lot of meetings, this is just slightly different. Um, you know, I, I was at a meeting recently, and I'm not going to say the neighborhood out of, out of respect. Um, there was so, so much disrespect at that meeting towards your fellow neighbors, towards city staff, that I felt the need to say something about it and to whomever is listening. Um, you know, we're all, we're all in this together, we're all neighbors. Um, and a lot of the people that come out to these neighborhood meetings, they're taking time away from their children, other things they could be doing, sitting on the sofa, watching TV. Whatever they choose to do, they're going, they're showing up. Um, and if we could try to think, most importantly, about respecting each other, because when we stop respecting each other, it says more about who we are as a person than what we're saying disrespectfully to somebody else. Um, and it really kind of hurts participation. Someone that, we, you know, badgered or has been disrespectful, who does have young children, they don't want to be there anymore, they'd rather spend that time with them. And so, just please be considerate, we're all adults, um, and we're out in the wild. No one's reining us in, we need to rein ourselves in. Um, uh, on that note, Pleasant City has, is having their family reunion September second, starting at twelve PM. They've done a fantastic job at growing their association. And so if you can come out and support, that would be amazing. Um, I don't know if the C M, there's a lot of meetings going on this week or in the next couple of weeks, but I don't know if this is mentioned, the C MUD workshop is also on Wednesday. Wednesday's stacked, um, the twenty-third at five thirty, across the hall in the Flagler Gallery. Um, and then, in case anyone wants to have an eye exam, a free eye exam for their children that is started at school, the Center for Creative Education is having free eye examinations tomorrow, the twenty-second is Tuesday. And you can call the center to reserve a spot if there's still some left. I believe that's it, thank you.
All right, uh, thank you. On the point about the workshop, Ms. Johnson, let's see if we could set up a public safety workshop to hear from police in particular. Commissioners, if you have issues that you would like covered in that workshop, if you can get that to Ms. Johnson, so that the police chief has the ample, uh, time to prepare for what will be on that agenda. Um, so let, let's do that. So the commissioners, ourselves, yeah, we do hear about it at different community meetings. But, uh, let's see if we have an opportunity for us to hear directly and ask questions and, and do that. So see if we get that scheduled.
Mayor, if, if I could, is this time-sensitive? In that, I know the work session agenda is pretty full between now and the end of the year, unless we're going to do an extended meeting. And certainly, I can do that.
Why don't you, why don't you and I sit down, uh, and look, look over that calendar? And then, we may need to move some things around. But I'd, it certainly would like to happen before the end of the year. But meanwhile, commissioners, if you could start getting your issues to the city administrator, we will get something scheduled. Uh, thank you, Madam President, for bringing the issue of compensation, Commissioners, Mayor, uh, to, uh, the forefront, and we will follow up. And, but that, as others have said, is not always an easy thing to do when you're sitting on the dais, is to consider, um, in, in effect, increasing your own compensation. But we're not doing it, as Commissioner Peduzzi said, we're not in this, we're not getting, nobody's getting rich by this. Uh, and no one is going to get rich by any proposed in, in increase. So let's see what we can come up with. Just very, very briefly, I had the opportunity on, uh, a couple of weeks ago to attend the groundbreaking of Alba, Palm Beach, uh, which is going to be a tremendous project, um, at the north end of the city. Um, that group will deliver fifty-five luxury residences, um, at the north end. Um, probably set, as I understand it, it's going to set new records for property value in Northwood. So, uh, that, that is a, that could be a transformative project at that end of the city, which, which is great news. Um, someone had mentioned the, the grand, uh, the ribbon cutting that we had recently. Uh, there will be three hundred and nine one and two-bedroom apartments and nine three-bedroom townhomes, townhomes. But of that three hundred and nine, or three hundred and eighteen, over two hundred, uh, units will be for workforce housing. Uh, so a very significant increase in the availability of workforce, um, uh, what I call essential housing in, in our city. Uh, we do want to remind everyone about our new transit pilot program that's serving downtown West Palm Beach and is an extended coverage area with circuit. We're still working out some glitches, uh, to, to try to improve it, but it is, it's a pilot. And so we're going to learn from the pilot. Uh, and so we're, uh, looking to reduce emissions by using electric vehicles, uh, pooling riders, expanding access with free fares, uh, bridging gaps to existing transit, also helping to create new jobs and promote new activity. Uh, it's available Monday through Friday from seven AM to seven PM, and Saturday from nine AM to seven PM. Uh, the vans are going to run every fifteen minutes. And for more details, visit ridewpb.com. And, um, so we're, um, excited about the progress. We know that it hasn't been perfect. And, and so, um, uh, we hope that people continue to use it so we can continue to learn and make it better and improve it, uh, so that once we do go out with an RFP, uh, we will have, uh, be able to better identify what we're looking for. Uh, there's been reference made to the STEM program. Uh, you're right, Commissioner Ward, Wednesday is, is full. Uh, the STEM in the City Forum that's happening in observance of National Black Business Month. Uh, and that's going to be at our Lake Pavilion, Wednesday from five to eight. Uh, to register, visit steminthecity eventbrite.com. That's STEM, S-T-E-M, in the city, dot eventbrite, E-V-E-N-T-B-R-I-T-E, dot com. Um, if you missed it, and I know most of you did because I was there, uh, we had a tremendous Soul in the City performance last Wednesday, the August, uh, edition, uh, which was just fantastic. Again, a sellout, um, and it is demonstrating that there is indeed a market for jazz in our city, which will serve us well as we ramp up the, the, uh, opening of the Sunset. So there is another event on Wednesday, September twentieth, C.C. Tenille, an award-winning jazz vocalist, um, will dazzle us with sounds of soulful jazz and funky originals, as well as a celebration of the music of the queen of soul, Aretha Franklin. Uh, that takes place at the Lake Pavilion on, uh, Wednesday, September twentieth. Tickets are ten dollars per person, but I'm already told it's sold out. But, you know, he may be able to work out something. But, if you're interested, please, please, call to try to get a ticket. Um, reminder that West Palm Beach City Hall and Mandel Public Library will be closed on Monday, September fourth, twenty-twenty-three, in observance of Labor Day. Uh, regular trash and garbage pickup services will be provided. However, uh, that's all I have. God bless each and every one of you on this dais. God bless all the citizens of West Palm Beach, and God bless our great city. Uh, good night all, thank you.